And the agenda and what we want to accomplish tonight. I'm going to ask him to do some timekeeping and just quickly, I'm going to go through what's in front of you. We're going to spend 10 minutes. This is just follow up on what we said we would do for the last meeting. I don't see in what we've given you today, I wrote up a document that has seven steps to conduct to doing a survey and we don't have all of those.
Yeah, it's two pages, double sided. Should be the first page and the second page.
Okay, gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. I took a document that's online from Survey Planet. They are just a company who does surveys. And wrote up the seven points or seven steps that they want us to go through or that one we go through if you want to do a survey. And so one, two, three, and four on the first page are what we want to try and get done tonight. Five, six, and seven have to do with sending out the survey, analyzing it, reporting it, back off. So let's go back up then to where we are now and just to update. Is there any input on the council's document that you saw last month? That is just trying to lay this out as a process that we can monitor and hold ourselves accountable to moving forward on? Any questions or comments from that? We don't have a copy for you tonight.
No.
Vector analysis. Sharon and I sat with Josh Como a couple of weeks ago and he put up on his computer, this is data strictly from the, we looked at medical and we looked at fire. And just looked at, it's almost like heat spots. So if you have more calls in a neighborhood, then the spot is bigger. We took a look at those. The rough estimate I would say is that there are more calls in, I'll just say this part of Gerhardt than the north end of Gerhardt. And then there's a large distance in the fire district and there's a lot of calls out there too. But as far as Gerhardt proper, my take on it was that there were more certainly medical calls down in this area than up north. Would you agree?
Yes.
It was hard to tell. It was kind of, it was very spread.
My impression was that the calls, majority of the calls were from here north. Is that correct?
Did he manage to actually attach to your packet, page three?
Oh, there you go. Okay.
A little bit more detail on three, four, five, and six, but I think it's the best picture.
Okay, great. So we study those. We can get them posted or blogged or something so that the public can see them. But it kind of answers where the calls are. Should that enter into any more decision making due down growth. Chad and Mayor was gonna talk to Mr. Brogdon.
Yeah, yeah. And I talked to him and Brogdon. He, we went to the Oregon State Building Code Division to talk about any type of exemptions that we could get for critical infrastructure for our building site. And that, there is no exceptions built into that process for the building portion of those types of buildings. So the $9 million foundation and the way that they're building the walls and all of that is pretty well laid out in the building code. For reference, if you look at Mansfield, they just built a 1,600 square foot police station. That, that foundation cost them $2 million for that 1,600 square foot. And they're under similar soils as we are, about a 60-foot columns is what they need to do. So we extrapolated that out and looked at what our architects were thinking and the structural engineers were thinking for the $33 to $35 million project. And it maths. It's very comparable. Divided by the square foot of what Mansfield did, multiplied by ours, it comes up to about $9 million. So it's a very similar price point to that. But what we did find out is that you can, if we would like, be able to remodel that building in its current state. And we can do some things, potentially a level two remodel to do some things that can make it a little bit better during an earthquake. It won't really do anything for tsunami, earthquake that is very limited, we can do. And we still can't get into the foundation because the soils in this particular location are so poor that the $2 million, $2.5 million grant that we investigated would not be applicable to us because our soils are so poor. They looked at our geotech and decided that it just wasn't a good fit for Gerhardt. This is the one the seaside use back in the day. So Oregon State Building Code did say, yeah, you could remodel and put some money into that old building and maybe make it last forever. So that was the gist of it. They're able to, if we were to move the police to the fire office from here to there, that would work. It's not until we take the police and fire and try to take them out of either city hall or our current fire station, but then do a new structure, this critical infrastructure, then take over. So we have some options.
List of essential needs. Dana and I did meet, we did not meet with the two chiefs. She has a needs assessment document that was, that she put together at the beginning of the project for the current station over there, the new station over there. And I think my sense was that you kind of stood by the essential needs and there really wasn't much that you felt we could dice down or make smaller, that you all paid attention to that during the first process you went through.
Right. Right. We just identified what was, what was wrong with the existing, how they weren't meeting the needs that we have now. The existing buildings were not meeting their current operational needs.
And then you took that and designed a new station to meet all those needs.
Right.
Sharon met with Public Works Director.
Yeah, so I met with Mark and his first response was to say that he either needs it to be somewhere else or he needs increased space. He said that all machinery sits outside right now, even the stuff that's in the pole barn, pole barn is not watertight. So stuff gets wet. He also foresees that there will be a need for two or three more workers within the next two to three years. He said that if we do put it here, he definitely needs increased space. I asked him in his wildest dreams what he would like to have. And he said he would like to have four bays, two office spaces, upstairs storage. Was his needs list, if you will. He also said something that surprised me and that was that he foresees that within the next year that other works will be held critical infrastructure. That's what I got from him.
Insurance and bond rates were questions that were asked and Chad did some follow up on that.
Yeah, I did some questions. The insurance, I talked to Kenison and some with CIS to discuss if we were to do various things with it, remodeling the building, what would that do to our insurance? And they said that it wouldn't really do anything to our insurance. We're already insured for the buildings. It might adjust for value slightly depending on the work that you're doing. The only concern was that the current building, depending on how much money you put into the building, you know, whether or not insurance would cover a replacement. And they said that if something happened to the current building and we had to replace it, we might get what we had for a bond placed on that building. Let's say we went out for five or $10 million to do all the remodeling and building around here. You can get that out of an insurance policy, but you're not going to get a replacement value out of it, of course. So that you could replace it with a critical infrastructure building for $33 million. So he says the costs won't really change for the city of Gerhardt. On the bond rates, we talked about some various scenarios, $20 million bond. If we were able to reduce costs on anything, would cost about $2 per thousand to our community. If we were to do a bond for a remodel and building the public works building, it was suggested that we not do the bond, anything beyond 10 years. Typical bonds are 20 years. That seems to be where most communities are. But he would recommend that if we're going to remodel that building and you get anywhere beyond its extended lifespan, which might be another 10 years or so, depending on how much work we put into it. They would suggest leaving it at 10 years. That way, at the end of 10 years, you don't owe anything on it. And then the future community can decide what they're going to do if that building needs to be replaced. So a 10-year bond for 10 million, just, we have no idea, you know, well, we have a little bit of an idea, but what a remodeling new public works building and remodel on this building would be, if that was $10 million, 10-year bond on that would be about $1.67 per thousand based on that. And he would recommend that the city go for a 10-year bond on that remodel scenario, not a 20-year bond.
So the insurance, potential insurance replacement of the bond money, would that be the entire bond value or just what was left of bond?
Probably what was left minus depreciation.
So they pay off the bond?
What's left of the bond?
Yeah.
And the portion that was attached or whatever it is that's destroyed.
We pay off five years of the bond that we only get from insurance, only get five years of the bond. It doesn't really help us towards.
A replacement.
Right. And what would the replacement value be? I mean, if it's 33, 35 million today, five years from now, it's going to be easily 50 million or more.
By 40s, 50s.
We're putting a bandaid on it and we're just kicking the can down the road. And if we remodel, you're going to talk to us about the foundation depth and whatnot, but I'm not imagining we can make this building last us beyond 10 to 20 years. It's not going to last us 20 years. The sheer size alone is going to, is going to limit our operation there and require that we have to build something later. You're not going to be able to add on to it with the foundation issues that you're going to address here a little bit. You're not going to be able to go up.
All right. And then in the future, we might be able to find some more appropriate location and the people may be more accepting of a location when it doesn't take 60-foot columns.
And foundation depth?
Foundation depth. Josh, you want to talk about what you, Chief Josh Como, you talked about what you found?
Sure.
The way you did it.
I got an impact drill from ERS and I drilled a hole in all four apparatus base. They ranged in depth. They were pretty close. It went from just over three and a half inches to, what, four and three quarters inches is how thick the floor is. The wall that separates bays two and three, so the first building and second building, because second and two bays was the first addition, six years after the first one was built. That is, was 12 inches deep on that wall. And the same as the, I dug down on the west side wall and that was 11 inches was that foundation depth down inside there.
So we're going to have a structural engineer take a look at that and I'll explain a little more on about that in a minute.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that follow up? Okay, so we're gonna, the next little middle of the page talks about what we're kind of trying to get through in this meeting. And then if you go down to where it says constructing a survey, seven steps. And number one, the first thing that we need to do is identify what we need to know or what is our goal here. And so I just, I wrote in, these are my thoughts only and they're not locked in. Obviously, this is a work session. We want to wordsmith this if we can, but try and get agreement on this. Identify the preferences of, and this is a decision make we have to make, voters, residents, or homeowners, or all of the above, in Gerhardt of an investment in public safety infrastructure. And I think that's what we're trying to get some information on. But anybody want to react to that or anything else to say? Is there anything else we're trying to identify with the survey?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's pretty much it. In a nutshell, it's a nice way of saying we're looking for some direction.
Right. And obviously, the next bullet points say, we need to pay attention to the location, the cost, and the departments impacted. We are looking for voter preference on location and cost. And we're looking to achieve a decision forward for council to move draft on. Because ultimately, we will have to decide whether to go in March, May. In March, we have to decide whether we'll go in May.
The only thing I would add to that is that we need to also consider the short term and the long term implications of whatever decision we make. We've left for a bond now for 10 years, for $10 million. That is a big lump of money to ask folks to pay. And I think some will have to, again, I'm going to repeat this, some people have the impression that that means that we fixed it and they don't need to reinvest in 10 years or 20 years, which is simply not the case. This is just a bandaid to get us through.
So when we get to the questions, which are coming up on the next page, I hope that I've identified, you know, I've addressed that, but we'll, we can, we can surely do that. Okay, so moving on to number two, it says the same thing that was in parentheses above. We have to define our population. Do we want to know what the voters would like to do? The residents? Which is mostly voters and some homeowners, but there are renters as well who are voters. Or do we want to ask the homeowners? Or part-time residents, if you will? My bias a little bit would be to try and get as much voter data as possible. But I want to hear what everybody else thinks.
I'm wondering if there's a way to, I'd like to have data from both homeowners and voters. And I'm wondering if there's a way on the survey for them to answer the question, are you a voter or are you simply a homeowner and not a voter? So that might be a question we could put on there and then we could split it out, but we'd still have the homeowner's input.
So you could checkbox both then?
Yeah, I agree with that. In a perfect world, you know, we would, all of the above would be driving this decision, but really for practicality, what we need to know is what will people say yes? What will the voters pass? That's really the information that we need.
Right. But it's, and I absolutely agree with that. But you know, the, you've got homeowners who are going to be paying, you know, a substantial amount of what will we decide on. So it'd be good to kind of know where they lay on this too.
Yeah, no, I don't have any problem with that. I'm just saying, you know, if it has to be one or the other, then it has to be, from my perspective, it has to be the voters.
And we did that. If you look at here, the middle of the packet, there is the document. So results for the 947 surveys that we received back, I don't remember the date of the survey.
Yeah, I was wondering.
I don't have that on the clock. Maybe in, Kristy would know. But if you look at all the 947 surveys, then there was residents of Gerhardt, including full-time residents, part-time residents, registered voters, and your property owners. Then we had a registered voter of Gerhardt survey list as well, because we did ask that question, are you a registered voter of Gerhardt?
That's not part of the July 2022.
That's the first one.
No.
So that'd be on the background where it says January 29, 2019, we had a three-month period of feedback?
Yeah.
For survey.
It was 19. 22 was a smaller survey. What we got just about was 185. Earlier, we had 947.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is page two of this updated 5219. It's not what that is?
Yep. And I was in page one of that, the results. That might have gotten, that page might have gotten flipped.
Okay. So we have data from 2019 where we surveyed voters and homeowners. Mayor's survey, July of 2022. 291 responses. Do we know who it's supposed to? Anybody recall?
I don't think we have voters versus non-voters in that one.
Which one was that one?
That was in 22, July of 2022.
The mayor's?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chad, both surveys were published the same way. They were both paper copies available or online and blogged out and the water bills.
Right. What I was looking at was that the 2022 Mayor Smith survey didn't have a question in it about whether or not you were a voter and the 2019 survey did.
Yeah. Yeah. Questions wanted to, where are you a registered voter and do you own property? In Gerhardt.
Preston, any thoughts?
I think that you need to include the people that are up on the front, regardless of whether they're voters or non-voters. Because people live down on the old drive-in property, there's four of those guys down there that don't pay the taxes that the one guy up there does.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. That's, I mean, that's, that's my big concern.
So is there?
These people up here are going to be fronting the bill.
So is there a consensus then that we want to add in question about whether you're a homeowner or voter? Well, I mean, yeah, both. That's what I mean. Yes. So we just did number two. We've done number one. Moving on to number three. Need to decide on the type of survey. Now, on the next page, to go through the seven steps of creating a survey, you'll see that I wrote an explanatory statement. So this is on page two of the packet. The Garrett City Council is committed to find a solution that the voters will accept to improve our public safety infrastructure. Council hopes to vote of voters in May of 2026 with one or more of the following options for voters to recruit. Would you be likely to support a municipal bond for any of the following? Vote yes for any that you would be willing or likely to support. Vote no for any you would not support. I'm just going to pause there and say that the other way to do this would be to put it out in something that's called ranked choice voting. Just different than a yes or no question.
No, no.
People don't like ranked choice.
That's right. Because you can't follow.
Right.
I would be in favor of ranked choice only because if a lot of people say no to a choice, but a lot of people say no to like their second choice, then we have an idea that maybe the second choice would float. That's my rationale.
And you may be able to get that from this if we allow people to say yes to more than one. I would hope that they would. Because if we put out there five different, and I think we have five different options here, and we get 20% back on each one.
Does it have to be completely either or? Or is there no way to format the survey in a way that there's yes or no, yes or no, yes or no?
And then do a ranked choice.
And then do a ranked choice on what particular, you know, in order of your preference?
I mean, you could do them both. I mean, you're basically asking the same question in two different ways, really. To me, it would be interesting because you could analyze both sets of data then. As far as ranked choice voting, I mean, when it comes down to it, the procedures for that are pretty easy. It can be done with paper and pencil if you have to. But it can also be done with a Google form. And I mean, I, I did a Google form, put it in ranked choice format, sent it to myself, answered the questions, and sent it back. And it worked. The ranked choice, my, my choices. I did it twice. I did them both times. So.
It's mostly useful for like limited choices too. We have, depending on how many questions that we have on something like this. Typically, it's four to six is what works well with ranked choice. If there's going to be more questions than that or more options, which I'm not looking at, it can be arduous. Trying to do a cognitive burn, if you will, trying to figure all that out. But for smaller surveys and all that, I did some research after the line, explained it to me. Could work out pretty well for us and give us a good solid one or two. So we can play around with that format a little bit once we decide on the question.
I'm going to back up just for a minute on, on the questions. I did not put any demographic questions. I guess we've come up with one to add and that is kind of a demographic and, are you a voter or are you a homeowner and/or a homeowner? Is there any other demographics that you would want to know? Respondents' age or second?
Well, I'm just trying to think. Our voters who aren't homeowners are going to be either renters or people living with mom and dad in the community.
Do you want to know renters?
Sure. Because they're going to vote.
Yeah, but they're not paying any taxes.
But they care.
They are paying taxes. Absolutely.
Sure.
What do you think their rent's based on?
Well, there's a. So as far as a demographic, I'm comfortable with, I don't, I don't want to go off into the weeds too much with this and I don't want to mix with questions that we lose them that they won't fill it out. So I'm comfortable just knowing, are you a voter or are you a homeowner? I do want to make a note before we move on to anything else, though I want to back up to the explanatory
Yeah.
statement and address some issues there.
So anyway, there is a list here of different types of questions. Obviously, multiple choice, you don't see any on the current questions. We do have yes or no. We talked a little bit about ranked choice. And the only other thing that I put in this from the article was that easy questions should come before more complex ones. And all questions should be relevant to the typical survey, which is to figure out what residents and voters preferences are. Before we go any further, then Dana, you want to talk about that explanatory statement?
Yeah, your explanatory statement states, the Gearhart City Council is committed to find a solution that the voters will accept to improve our public safety infrastructure. And I just don't know if that really addresses the whole, the whole scope and the, and the, the need. It almost, again, sounds like we don't have a problem and we could just choose to not do anything at all and things would be just fine, which is not the case whatsoever. Or at least I don't, I don't.
So something about?
So something, something along the, and, and also, well, I, I, this is something that I, I just drafted really quickly. The Gearhart City Council is committed to protecting citizens, staff, and volunteers by making necessary changes to the city's public safety infrastructure. And then
And then this.
And then to do this, the city is looking for input from you, and then the council hosts to go to the voters.
I would advocate for adding to that explanatory statement that something along the lines of, you know, this is a decision, potentially a decision between building for ten years or building for fifty years. I would, I'd love to see that in the explanatory statement.
So for, so current ideas being discussed and considered include short-term solutions and long-term solutions?
Yeah, but I think if you spell it out, ten years versus, you know, fifty years, that paints a more exact picture in a person's mind. I know that's embedded in the questions, but I wouldn't mind seeing it in the explanatory statement as well. Because really, that's the bottom line in how people, what people vote for is, do they want it for, to build for ten years and kick the can down the road? Or do you want to build for forty to fifty years? That's the bottom line.
Do you guys want to move on to the questions? Give me a couple of minutes to, to work on something a little bit while you do that, and then I'll
Yeah.
I'll give you a couple of suggestions or you think?
Unless there's any more input for what she's gonna draft from y'all.
Not at this point. Go ahead.
Okay. So the first question is under A. Just gonna read it. Current project as developed by the public engagement process in two thousand twenty-five or twenty-four. It's tied up. This would be a new fire station, new public works building, and a remodel of the existing city hall.
It's a public safety building, not a fire station. I'm sorry to be, that's
Well, I actually I was a little confused in even writing this, where the police department, because I know they've done some remodeling, so that's why I used fire, because I'm a little confused as to like, are they in or are they out or?
The most definitely.
Yeah, got it. Okay, this would be a new public safety building, public works building, and a remodel of existing city hall. Built to critical infrastructure standards for a fire station in a tsunami zone or a public safety building?
Public safety is, includes the fire and police. Their critical infrastructure. Public works at this particular time is not.
Right.
Even though they, they're the third leg of the stool.
This is a generational solution built to be used for fifty or more years. Cost of two versions, thirty-three million, thirty-five million, about three dollars per thousand assessed value of property. Yes, no? Comments, questions? Other than fixing my errors? Question B, remodel of the existing fire station. Build a new public works building and remodel city hall. This would satisfy most workplace concerns for fire, police, and public works, and possibly create more office space and meeting space for city functions. The cost would be about ten million, about one dollar sixty per thousand A V. The remodel may only be an effective solution for about ten years.
Okay, we need to point out that on the thirty-three, thirty-five million A, it's a twenty-year bond, and on the, the remodel is the ten-year bond. That is the difference in the cost.
And also.
As a way of
It kind of needs to be in that, a dollar sixty slash per thousand A V slash ten years, twenty years.
Right.
And, and somehow address the fact that because it's a ten-year and not a twenty-year, you're looking at a higher, you're looking at a higher per month payment. So if you go with a short-term bond, you're gonna have to pay more per month, not quite as much as you would pay on a twenty-year for the, for the full brand-new building, but still a significant amount, and at the end of that ten years, then you're gonna, then you're gonna have to start paying, or possibly could start paying for a brand-new building for sometime very soon after.
Right, and so that's reflected in the dollar per thousand.
Right.
Yeah, okay. On C, new location. Explore new public safety building at Dune Meadows Park. Cost would be about twenty million or two dollars per thousand. Yes or no? Comments?
How did we come up with a twenty million dollar thing for Dune Meadow Park?
Okay, thank you. Now, so I think that that needs to be said as well, because these prices are not quite set yet. The architects are still working on it. I mean, these are estimates that we put into. The thing about Dune Meadow Park and the reserve or the Highlands Lane or cottages at Gearhart is that the soils are in much better shape in both those locations than they are here at the city.
How do they know the soils are better at Dune Meadows?
Well, we don't have the geotech information from the Dune Meadows Park, but we do have the geotech information on that dune and how it is. Also, the structural engineer and the geotech both explained to me that any time that you can get over thirty feet away from the aquifer, that you are in much better shape, thirty feet. So let's say that the aquifer is standing, in this particular location, the aquifer's at eighteen feet of elevation. We're at twenty-seven feet, so we're within, we're, we're within ten feet of the aquifer. That makes this site very challenging. Park, it's at fifty-eight feet. The aquifer is at about eighteen feet there. So you're more than thirty feet away from the aquifer. That changes liquefaction entirely. You almost get no lateral spread. Lateral spread is what's making this site so expensive with the columns. What we do know is that the site that was for the, in the Highlands or the cottages at Gearhart, that particular site was less expensive to build on because they only had to go down fifteen feet to make the foundation work, not sixty feet. So the foundation was much less expensive there, and that is a probable scenario for the park location.
That type of column?
That type of, yeah, to where fifteen feet may be all that's necessary. But I don't have a definitive answer for you there. The architects are gonna go over that with their structural engineer and the geotech as well.
Do you think the question, if, it, it says new public safety building, do we need to add the two dollars per, for twenty versus, would that be consistent to put?
Yeah.
We're talking twenty-year bond?
Do you want to maybe capitalize or? For some people.
Here. And it's everybody, do we have a consensus that we even want this on there?
I took the Meadows off, and I think it needs to be put back on because of the amount of people that responded and said that would be a choice, just to get the data.
Was that in the mayor's data?
I believe so.
Any other comments on that? Item D, new location, reconsider Highlands site, as was put to voters in two thousand twenty-two, would require a subdivision to be annexed into the city. This new facility would be built to critical infrastructure standards. I mean, I could, we could do something like that to C to make it a little more clear for our police and fire station. Cost is less than downtown location because Dune's more stable, requires less expansive vertical foundation. Cost about twenty million per thousand, twenty-year bond. So really C should reflect some of the stuff that D has in it too, as far as building at critical infrastructure standards and such. Item E, explore other property outside the downtown core that may be available. Anybody want to react now?
No, but I want to go back to C and D. Would it be good to put in C and D, the altitude of the sites?
That could be a good idea for, you know, information for the person.
Any other comments about C, D, or E?
The Highlands site is further away from downtown Gearhart than it is to the Herdick Station.
How do you figure that?
That's not true. I've timed it in my car.
You mean that the if we set it there, we would be farther away from downtown, then that site would be from Herdick Station?
No.
Over your diamond side?
From Herdick Station to downtown is approximately four minutes, I want to say. Now, this is going the speed limit, so this is not like racing along at whatever, sixty miles an hour. The Highlands site to Gearhart Lane takes two minutes at speed limit.
To Gearhart Lane.
Gunhead. I'm speaking about intersection of Gunhead Road. I'm speaking about to this station right here. The mileage from Herdick Station to the cottages is less than from the cottages to the station.
Okay, I don't know, again, I don't
Miles.
I don't know about the mileage.
Miles.
I'm saying going the speed limit, I can't imagine what you reach Gearhart Lane and then come over to here from Gearhart Lane is gonna take an extra two minutes. Doesn't make sense.
Well, we can follow that up.
Yeah, we can.
I mean, somebody can go out there with their car and measure it.
I mean, typically, Josh, what speed limit are you guys, how much over the speed limit are you guys going?
We don't remember this.
Never did.
Okay.
The general rules.
Can the police chief step out?
The general rules, ten miles.
That's thirty, that's fine. Well, thirty minutes.
Okay, yeah, we're moving right along. Any comments on having question E on there?
Do we want to have a write-in ability?
Well, if you're gonna you mean like suggesting properties?
I don't think that's necessary, because we're looking at something that we have information on. We know here it'll be thirty-five million. We know it's gonna be ten million for a remodel. And you start going, well, let's get a suggestion from you and you and you, and all of a sudden we're lost. Well, that's a good idea, but, you know, how many people will buy that idea?
Didn't I have on my draft, this would be starting at square one or something like that? I basically said.
Exactly, yeah.
It started over.
Right.
Well, I mean, that begs a question, do we even need E for the purposes of this survey?
I can think of one piece of property that you'd have to buy two houses off of that gives you elevation. But if there happens to be a seismic event or tsunami or whatever it is, you won't be able to get to downtown Gearhart. And that's up on Summit. But that's the only, I mean, that's the only chunk of property that I can think of. And like I say, you'd have to buy two pieces of property up there.
Are they for sale?
No.
That makes it hard.
Yeah, but, I mean, when you look at it logically, that's the only other place that's high enough. It's on the same ridge as what the Highlands property would be. So if you're looking for elevation, you either have the front up here, which I'm pretty sure there's gonna be huge controversy over that. I mean, we're, you know, we're limited.
The cottages is at, at seventy-plus feet, right?
Yes.
And Summit is at fifty-six or something like that?
Been everywhere it's at on that, right? I think.
Yeah.
Fifty-eight for the park, twenty-seven for here.
Okay, are we gonna scrap question E?
I would.
Preston?
Yeah, maybe it's done.
Okay, the next section, let me go back a little bit in the notes. With this project, we looked at questions. Well, the next section in the packet, Chad asked me to write out some pros and cons. I'm not sure what we could use this for. He said it was for council discussion, which we can go through there. There's probably a lot more pros and cons, and this would certainly be something that we would use maybe to put out there in advance of the survey. Or even as a page of the survey. Help me out here, do we want to take a look at this now, or is this more than we want to do at this point?
I think it's more than what we want to do, and plus it doesn't quite jive with the rest of the paper. It's got the remodel at one dollar a thousand. It doesn't have the rest of it at two dollars a thousand. rest of it at $2,000 per cost.
Yeah.
And we can get rid of that E, so as a, just what I see immediately.
Well, I think pros and cons could be useful down the road as a way of just laying out the alternatives for the voters. So other than what Carrie said, I've added that. Are there any other bullet points? Do you want to get bullet points to me later? I mean, we obviously want it to match what we're saying in the questions.
So pros and cons would be something that would go in the voter's pamphlet, right?
Except, I mean, theoretically, we're not going to the voters with five different options or four. So it might be something that we would want to use.
But we could, we could post it on the city's website and have the bottom, in the fine print at the bottom of the survey, you can say work, work mission can be found on the, you know, if I follow the link, you can.
Yeah.
The pros and cons.
Is that helpful?
You know, or if we figure out what the pros and cons are, if there's just one or two top on each, we could probably write that into the question. Again, we want to avoid leading anybody. We want to avoid getting into an educational type atmosphere. But if we were to say something, you know, for example, new location, explore new public safety building, doing those parks cost would be about $20 million. Pros are, well, I guess that would be a really difficult one to use as an example because the pros are that it's got the elevation, it's flat, and it's available. The cons are that it's not widely popular as in the past, and it would be potentially removing some of the park. I mean, that's just some of the things that you'd want to maybe put in there. But we wanted to keep it short and sweet. One of the concerns that I've got is people that I'm talking to who are very supportive of the fire department, police department just don't understand why we can't put three to eight million dollar building on this current location. There's still a lot of people who think that that's just what needs to go here. And unfortunately, people just do not understand the critical infrastructure side of this and what legally we can and cannot do. And I think online that that thing's been tossed around in all sorts of different ways and haven't been able to clarify. So there should be something in there with the pros and cons saying that, you know, the pros are that, yeah, it's a current location. Where we're currently at, we keep our community together, that's what people like. Cons are that, you know, it's very poor soils and we have legal responsibility to bring it up to critical infrastructure standard. So this is what we're pricing comes into place. But I still have people saying something like that. So there might be some clarified pros and cons that we need to throw into the questions without leading folks to a conclusion. Do you know how horrible the conditions are that these people can't even take a shower after a call where they have all this and that on them? What do you think about money for this? You know, we don't want to get into that. But I think that a few neutral pros and cons into each one of the questions would be written would be helpful for people to understand a little bit more about it. They can rely on the information that they get out of that versus what they're getting. You know, as it gets spread around online, you know, with good intentions sometimes, it goes badly and people get confused and they lock that down. Just this week, I had a couple of conversations with voters. Can you do it for five? I mean, we heard that price, is that possible? Like, I wish, I wish we could just put a pull bar in there. I wish we could just do something very light, make it work, give these firefighters, police officers everything that they need to be successful. But that's not possible. So somehow we need to talk a little bit about that when we draft these questions. But I think if we get to the meat, potatoes, what direction we're heading, we can do some of that. And then give it a neutrality test, if you will. Have some people take a look at it. You feel like you're being led and you feel like, you know, we want to just get down to the data. So yeah, I think that some sort of pro and con.
I think, I think that the biggest misconception is that the general public doesn't understand what critical infrastructure really means. I mean, you get, you know, it's, it's like you got a building codes book and it's this thick. You get to critical infrastructure, it gets to be this thick.
Yeah, I think that even goes on, just last week, it was the governor announced that she was considering making a law that every state building, whether or not it's in earthquake or tsunami, every state building over 10,000 square feet will be built to critical infrastructure. Not sure that they understand what that means.
Well, it's just like, it's just like when they said you can't build a school or a hospital or a fire station or a police station or anything else in the tsunami zone. And then they took a look at the Oregon coast and said, everything's in the tsunami zone. So then they had to modify that. You know? I mean, Seaside would have moved their, you know, that's where the Lewis and Park timberland stuff is. And even then, you know, we take a look at this high school that we voted for, it's going to be down on Mahana Road.
I talked to Javady about this last week. I, I told him, basically what you, what you all have done is created a situation where you have said, we cannot safely build a new building. It's better for you just to sit and deal with your outdated 60-year-old buildings until they fall down around your head and force you to take action. And then still, nobody's going to come in and help you. I told him, that's exactly what you have done. You have made it, you have, you know, with your virtuous, you need to build it to this regulation. You have essentially said, no buildings are going to be built.
Counsel, I think he was listening because on Friday when I talked to him, he said the same, the same.
Well, I hope he did.
He, he wasn't the one that did that. It was, you know, people about two generations before him.
But he's got the same concerns.
He's just, he's just catching the.
Well, if anybody wants to do a guest column or blog post or something explaining critical infrastructure.
Yeah, we get a month and a half now. And we just need to keep it going and keep it out there. And as some of the history groups pick up, I think they did, I think there was a couple of them.
Maybe the runner may paint.
Okay, so we're removing item E for now.
Yeah.
By consensus. Stick with A through D. Add the bond terms to it. And look at a way to add a little bit more information so that people understand the parameters of each location. I think that we could do that, right, this plan?
Yeah, and then could we just ask again about the rank choice? Do we want to?
We could put together a couple of versions, one that has rank choice, one that wasn't, and then test that out as well.
It would be asking the same questions. It's just going to be, the answer is going to be eight, one, two, three, and four instead of yes or no. I mean, it's, the questions are going to be the same. It's just which one is your preference? Second preference, third preference, fourth preference. And set out yes, no, yes, no. It just may give us more clear data, that's all. And second choices. Next steps then, who, what, and when? So it's going to be draft a survey.
Yeah, so let's, I think, let's draft the questions A through D. Add some of the explanatory information so that we can get people a little bit up to date. And then let's find a group of people maybe to test it out. We're here. Did you get the survey? You know, and give it a shot and take a little bit of feedback. Timeline wise, we'd like to get the survey pretty well completed and ready to go within two weeks. Get it out, let it soak for at least two weeks. Have some preliminary data for the November meeting. And then depending on how much data we get back, how many surveys we get back, you can decide whether or not we've got enough and it's well represented. And you decide which direction you want to move as a council based on what you've learned from the survey.
Okay, so do we need to talk about question about five, number five?
E.
No, five. Second page, distributing the survey.
Oh, okay.
The only reason I bring that up is because I don't, I mean, and I don't understand how this works. But depending on how we're going to do it, can it be done anonymous? Can the answers come back to us anonymously? And how do you determine whether one person has, is not voting twice, for instance?
If we use the software that Christie is suggesting, which I believe would be Survey Monkey, they, they help us kind of determine, especially people who reply via computer. It does have some MAC address information where it just says, hey, the same computer answered or went out and answered this five times. And we'll be able to identify, it won't tell us who it is, where they're at. It won't tell us any information. There is no database of MAC addresses that I'm trying to figure out who to. So it would be a completely anonymous survey using Survey Monkey unless we put name and address as one of the questions. If we didn't do that, then we would be able to tell if somebody had filled out multiple surveys online. Which I think is helpful, and most people don't. We didn't get a lot of identical surveys. We got some from the husband and the spouse that I think at one point when we were asking, you know, who was answering these things. And it was funny, about a little over 60% of the time, they're actually in different sites of the coin, right? So it wasn't like they were coming up. So I think that we can do a little bit of work there to make sure it is, but without a name and address, we're not going to be able to have a absolute number of what people think. We'll have a pretty good idea though, if we leave it anonymous. We can use the MAC address feature to make sure we don't have somebody putting 25 or 10 or 15 in there. And then we can look at a plus minus. When we get into it, we can look at, you know, errors. You know, okay, so we got some that were partially filled out, some that weren't. Christie did a really nice job on reporting those errors in those situations. There was a few that we polled because we did see that there was duplicates and they were exactly the same. So we polled a couple of those, but it wasn't, wasn't a major amount. So I think we'd get through an anonymous survey anonymously, we'd be able to get a pretty decent amount of information.
So in terms of distributing the survey, would we have a paper survey if people wanted to come into City Hall and get a survey?
Yeah, we could. It's amazing on how many of those really didn't, I mean, we did receive some of those, but as a ratio, it was not that high. So it seems like people are getting better and better with computer usage in town. So I think the primary would be going out on the Survey Monkey. But I do believe that it would be wise to offer it in every type of format possible. So whether or not we send out a QR code to everybody to go and do it online, we send them a paper survey to go and do it, and then we put it in, we input it in to Survey Monkey, there's a lot of work there, but we could do that. I would prefer that everybody could fill it out online because that would be the easiest on the staff. The next best would be paper that we would input. And then there's some people that might want to come in and ask some more questions. There's a few people that did, they could bring their paper survey or they'd bring their computer in and they'd say, hey, I got questions about this that I don't understand. And then they actually sat there and filled out their survey and it was submitted to them.
Would the emails be used then?
We would probably, we'd end up having to mail this out to everybody in the town. Both the voters list and our water bill list. And then we would have to take a look at the voter, the property owners list as well and find gaps. We combine those three lists, get rid of the repetitive addresses and names, and then figure it out from there. But it would go out probably a few thousand, close to 2,500.
Can we do it without a QR code?
Can we do it without a QR code? I mean, we can give them every option as possible. We can give them a QR code, we can give them a website, ask people to go to cityofgerhard.com and push the big link in button.
So I was imagining us sending out a paper document that people could fill out and return. But it also said if you would prefer to give us a response or actually would prefer that you respond on the computer and allow those who do want to respond on the computer to do it that way. But I, you know, in a retirement community like this, I'm concerned about not having a paper option for folks.
Yeah, that's why I would think that we would take all of those ideas and put them into one or two different mailouts. And then there's, you know, the other part, Alana and Sharon, I think both of you have mentioned at that point then also going outdoor to door as a potential, just saying, hi, I'm not here to sell you anything, I'm here to ask you to fill out a survey. That's it. And so maybe a combination of those things because we did get some pretty decent response on the east side of Highway 101, but not a great response. And then that would, you know, if we did a little bit of street work, we can get as many people to respond as possible, and then that way we don't have just the most motivated and well-organized group, whether that be for one of these options or against, well, you know, all of the options. Get as many people to answer it as possible.
Do you agree that we're not going to phone people though?
Yeah, I don't think, phone lists are difficult. I was talking to the PR firm, we were thinking about maybe going through them, and they said that that was a difficult way to go. They do have some phone lists, but with everybody having mobile phones these days, it's a little different. They thought door-to-door would be the best. Online, paper would be right up there as well. I think it would be a combination of all three. Some volunteers to help out.
So the reserve won't be included in this, right?
Yes. The neighborhoods that would not be included in this are the Reserve, or excuse me, the Highlands and that are not voters, their taxes would not pay for this. They are already paying more for fire coverage than the Gerhardians are. Well, and then they have to pay for the upstream as well. I think they're paying about 60. I'm sorry, just.
No, one of the ones that I lived up, lived up in the Halum. Lived up Bay City. Want to know what they're paying? The Halums paying $1.15 per thousand. Bay City's paying $2.70 per thousand.
Cannon Beach was paying $1.97, $1.85?
What is this, $1.85?
$1.85 per thousand is what Cannon Beach pays for their fire service. Anybody want to take a guess per thousand, what Gerhardians are paying? Some of you know.
20 cents.
It's about 20 cents per thousand.
I think it's 17, isn't it?
You want to go to Seaside Fire and have them come in? It would raise your taxes just for that. About a dollar fifty.
And that, and you would still need to address the building because it's not, it's, it just doesn't meet our modern standards, so it.
Correct.
Especially if you have employed firefighters.
Josh, we're getting very tired.
The other two bullet points under number five determine the number. The other two bullet points under number five determine the number of responses required and monitor the response rate. I need to do more reading, research on that, I've been really addressing that at this point in time. I wanna go back to your main statement, please.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is what I sketched out, and it's a little bit more wordy than what you had, but it includes suggestion that Sharon, so the Gear Heart City Council is committed to protecting citizens, staff, and volunteers by making necessary changes to the city's public safety infrastructure. The existing outdated facilities have been serving Gear Heart for over half a century. The council anticipates asking voters in May twenty twenty-six to consider one or more options. These options include short-term fixes such as a remodel of the existing stations. A remodel may extend the life of our current facilities for approximately ten years, but could limit options for modification to meet industry standards beyond that. Long-term solutions such as the construction of a new building are also being considered. A newly constructed building could be designed to serve the community for fifty years or more.
What was the first sentence?
The Gear, I'll send it to you right now. I'm trying to send it to you right now. The first sentence was, the Gear Heart City Council is committed to protecting citizens, staff, and volunteers by making necessary changes to the city's public safety infrastructure. The existing outdated facilities have been serving Gear Heart for over half a century. The council anticipates asking voters in May twenty twenty-six to consider one or more options. These options include short-term fixes such as a remodel of the, of the existing stations. A remodel may extend the life of our current facilities for approximately ten years, but could limit options for modifications to meet industry standards beyond that. Long-term solutions such as the construction of a new building are also being considered. A newly constructed building would be designed to serve the community for fifty years or more.
So not to criticize, but could that necessary changes be necessary upgrades?
Sure. You may have a problem with that? Necessary changes to necessary upgrades?
Can we have that written out, Chad? And then we can get back, John, anything that we see.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dana. I can email it to you right now. So we've got who, what, and when, we're gonna draft the questions, including the beginning statement. Chad, you said that could be completed within two or three weeks, too.
To draft the questions?
Yeah, to get it, like
Yeah, I think we could get it in pretty good shape by, by next week. You know, just to get an idea for the council, and then float those out with some of these changes that we're talking about, including the explanatory, uh, explanatory statement next week, and get that to the council. We can bat it around a little bit on an individual basis with any ideas that you might have, and then we'll get it ready for submitting. And then the week after, we'll get it ready to go out, and then week after that, we'll get it out.
So do we need to meet as a group again before he's got it in a package ready to go?
Well, I think it would be ideal to do that again, to see the package.
To see the final product before it comes.
Yeah, I would like to see it for the time.
Yeah.
And as a group, you know, any changes we make would be ideally done in a work session. If there had to be changes, minor
It should be
punctuation changes, you know, that kind of thing, allowed and, allowed.
Specific, yes. So, yeah, we could take a look at what would, a quick meeting such as this afternoon, you spend a half an hour going over the document, thumbs up, thumbs down, and then giving us any input that you might have.
Right.
We can get ready for publishing.
And it shouldn't be a big thumbs up or down, it should be, we've already gone over it with you individually. So all the feedback you should have, but as a group, we can go, yep, this is what we want.
I leave on the fifteenth.
I had to think about doing that earlier, we could do something quick and easy and during business hours, then we could do that last year later. So we'll come up with a
So thirteenth or fourteenth.
Yeah.
So pencil in or hold half hour, thirteenth and the fourteenth.
It's Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah.
The first day is, the first is a holiday. Or, the thirteenth is, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good start. I might even look at it next week. Because if we're gonna let this survey soak, it's long, that's just, that's a cracking term for how a pot stays in the water. If we're gonna let the survey be out there for a period of time, you know, if we can get three weeks, or two and a half weeks, or at least a good solid few weeks on the survey, we'll know a lot more than what we do now.
I'll be on Zoom.
So we'll come up with some dates, we'll look at the thirteenth, fourteenth as, as possible, and I'll talk with my team. We'll see how fast we can do a turnaround on this.
And Carrie is back on the thirteenth, fourteenth, though.
Well.
That's a Sunday.
Yeah.
Not
You're not.
No, we're not gonna meet on
No, but I'll be back.
Oh, yes, I got that.
Okay.
Would you be able to do a short meeting over Zoom?
Yeah. We can arrange some
We'll keep that
The old Columbus Day now in
And we work that day.
Oh, that Monday.
We work that day. It's a work day for us. All the federal employees get that day off. Schools
That's dirty.
Schools.
Don't. So, ready to school then.
So you all will be working?
We work that day.
Okay.
Cool.
I'm gonna be here.
Yeah.
Working.
We've accomplished everything that we set out to do.
Well, that's great. Look at that. Good job. That's why you're in charge.
You've got the gavel.
Yes, I do. Anyone got anything else they wanna add or say?
Just reminder that Bonneville Beach's team sent out an email inviting us all to an elected officials meeting on Saturday before the town hall in Seaside. I know we won't be here, but if you, if you're interested, tomorrow's the cutoff for the RSG.
Tomorrow's the cutoff.
I won't be here. Yeah, I'll see you.
Okay. And Sharon, did you?
Recording stopped.